Special public meeting for police to present information on USDA grant to purchase the vehicle, also Makita public meeting on bond issuance to order at 5:30 PM on Monday, April the 4th, 2022.
Chief Sofia, I'm with Peru City Police Department. We're applying for the USDA grant again. Again, it's the same grant we've been applying for, for probably about six years. It's a matching grant. We're hoping to get the max levy, which is $50,000 of the grant to purchase two cars. The city will purchase one and the USDA will purchase one. Cars are right at around $49,000 apiece. They're up quite a bit from last year. We'll be trading two of our older Ford Tauruses. They're 2014s. One's above $90,000 and the other one's just a little bit below $90,000 on them. We started occurring maintenance on both of them since they've gotten older. They were good cars over the years, but the last two years, they started seeing maintenance So our hope is that we can get these purchased this year. The Ford dealer says they should be in sometime this year. They don't know when, but they do have VIN numbers. They just haven't been built yet. They're going to be hybrid explorers or they're gas electric, so the fuel mileage should increase about nine to 10 miles a gallon, where normally we get 16. We're hoping to get somewhere around 23, 24 out of them to help offset the costs of fuel that keeps going up.
I'm sorry, chief. I wasn't listening when you said the tentative date of when you might get these?
We don't know. The grant probably won't be approved till sometime in July through the federal government. And then, once we get approved, then we have to wait and see when the dealer's going to have the cars come in. They're ordered tentatively. Where if we don't get the grant, it's not a problem. They'll zone elsewhere. But, delivery date is unknown. We might not see them until November or December. It's just hard to say right now. All the equipment for the cars is going to take three to four months to get, once we get the OK. So, it's going to be a slow process.
And this is Loet money plus the grant? Is that?
The grants through the USDA and then the money's appropriated through Loet.
So that's with the cars equipped, is that $50,000 apiece approximately? Or is that?
Yeah, that's, we're going to, we're going to use close to the whole $50,000. Even with trading in two cars, just because things are up. The cars are up about $5,000 more than last year with equipment and vehicles. So, we had to trade just to be able to afford to do it. And they're not giving us a lot for older cars. They're worth about $5,000. Where that model car didn't really sell that much in law enforcement. Nobody really wants them. If it was a Dodge Charger, it'd be a totally different story, but they're not.
Equipment will be transferred?
No. The equipment from the older cars don't fit in the newer cars. The only time you can transfer stuff is if you manage to stay in the same model of car. And since we keep our cars close to eight years, generally that model's gone before the new one, and then nothing fits.
Is this money, the $50,000, is that already in our budget?
Yes, it's already appropriated in Loet.
Okay.
Chief, what's the lifespan of these hybrid cars?
Hard to say. They're new. They've only been out, I think, three years. So, the departments we've talked to that had them have had good luck with them. They say the fuel mileage is a lot better because they run one minute on the motor, about five minutes on battery, then it starts back up. But it's actually the motor's a generator. So, with all the idling we do, it's going to save a lot of gas. Somebody's running radar. The air conditioner still works. The heat still works. The car only starts when it needs electricity.
Are we going to need to get some charging stations?
No, it's all through the motor. They don't plug in at all.
That's right, hybrids.
So, it basically just has more mileage than what the current ones do. You can actually drive farther on a tank. Same sized tank, just uses less fuel.
Do they have the same pickup?
They're actually a little bit quicker. They're more responsive. But maintenance on them is kind of unknown because they're new. But, if it's going to be a problem or not. So far, everybody we talked to hasn't had any issues with them.
Does anybody in the public have any questions or comments? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Mayor, thanks for that introduction. As part of what we need to do with the public hearing is actually convene a meeting of the Economic Development Commission. Again, those, those members are Tom, Gus, and Joe Mullinax, and I'm getting Sandy Chittam on the line. She could be on the phone.
Hey, it's on air.
Okay, you're live, and we're getting ready to go on the meeting. The purpose of the meeting today is to, this evening, is to discuss the Miami County Economic Development Authority's pledge of TIF revenue to help on two fronts. The first one is to, and the financing is for $600,000. And that is broken out into $400,000 to go towards the, to the housing developer for assistance in foundations, special foundations that have to be installed on geopiers due to the poor soil consistency that is down there on the site. And again, I want to make sure that everybody understands it has nothing to do with the contamination. It's based on the consistency of the soil to be able to support the foundations and those kinds of things. It's very similar to what had been done with the YMCA. We thought that that ground was going to get better from the YMCA as we moved to the east, but that was not the case. So, the total price tag for that assistance is $800,000. Four of this will be coming from the TIF revenues as part of this pledge. The other 200,000, or the other 400,000, we're looking at participation from the city council, which they're going to discuss this evening for 200,000, and then also 200,000 from the county. Again, that's 400,000 of this pledge for Makita. The other 200,000, because I said this was a $600,000 note with First Farmers Bank, the other 200,000 is going to the construction of Fort Pickleball Courts on Cano Street between where the Miami's Fort Air is and the skate park. And I believe that the last meeting, kind of towards the end, we kind of shared with the city council where those courts were specifically going. Again, the intent is also put a splash pad in there, but there's some other things that we have to weigh in. So again, the Economic Development Commission is here to discuss this project, answer any questions that the public may have, and then at the end, consider Resolution 4-4-22, which basically recommends to the city council that they go ahead and approve certain documents to support Miami County's Economic Development Authority's pledge. And then there's also a secret report that would be presented to the council at the meeting coming up here soon. So, Mr. Chairman, Joe.
No, no, just by the way, you want to go ahead and open it up for any questions? April 4th, 2022, this will be opening the Peru Economic Development Commission meeting concerning the Wabash River Equities. So, this will be presented at the city council for approval.
Are there any questions that the commission has?
I have no questions whatsoever. Sandy, have you got any questions?
No, I sure don't.
And how about the general public? Any questions on this?
I have a couple of questions. The, I'm kind of confused, Jim, with your $600,000, $800,000. So, you need 800 grand to clean up the ground down there, right?
To help with foundations, not clean?
Well, okay, to stabilize the soil, let's say.
Correct.
So, does that 800 grand, is that going to, is the developer using that 800,000?
The developer is, yes. Now, the developer is using that 800,000. The way it will go is that money will be with the Economic Development Authority as they do work. And that work will be submitted into us by invoices. We'll verify that the work's been done, and then we'll pay it up to 800,000.
Okay, and then, so, and then the money, so, what your suggestion, you've got 400 grand in the Makita fund that you're prepared to use for that. You want to get 200,000 from the city of Peru, 200,000 from Miami County?
That's the intent, yes.
Okay, and then, so, that 200,000 from the city of Peru, and then the 200,000 from Miami County. Somehow, we've got to replenish that money if the city uses that for this, I would think. So, where are we getting that?
Well, no, I mean, it's county, it's economic development, it's local income tax. It's specific for economic development.
Okay, so, the income taxes are what funds, local income taxes are what funds that account that?
Yeah, from all of the, everybody pays what's called a economic development income tax. It's part now of local income taxes that you pay.
Right.
Everybody that's employed in Miami County pays that. It goes into the state, the state then makes the allocation to the city, and the state makes the allocation to the county. That 50,000 that the chief just got for the car is coming out of the same account.
Okay.
So, it's local option income taxes.
Got you. And then, so it has absolutely no effect on property taxes?
No.
Okay.
No, if anything, our hope is that through the development of this project and building 170 homes, that overall is going to increase property taxes, either by establishing new businesses in the downtown, people spending their money in the downtown. So, we're, if you look at it as a return on investment, the city's looking at investing 200,000 of its funds, and in return is going to get 20 million in investment. So that's a rave return on investment.
Right.
So, I'd like to have that on my retirement funds, but, I mean, that's pretty good return on investment.
I understand.
Thank you. That answered it?
I think so.
Anybody else?
I have a question. I don't understand. And, from what I've read, we knew there were soil issues there at the beginning, and I'm assuming that the developer knew this. So it seems like we keep adding money to the same thing.
We knew, we knew that, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So, this is 200,000 more from the city, 200,000 from the county. And then you said, is it called Makita?
Makita, the Economic Development Authority.
Thank you, thank you. Is going to match those funds with 400,000.
If they approve this financing.
So, when we say it's 800,000, you're saying that's an up to?
Up to.
So, the individuals who decide whether or not the developer can pull from or draw from this, who makes that decision?
Well, again, it's based on invoices that they have, where the work is completed or materials have been ordered and are on site. So those invoices are submitted. We review them to meet. We review, we make sure that the work's been performed, and then we submit the invoices for them.
So you're going based upon what the developer says had to be done. Is there anybody on this team, there's a subject matter expert, who can opine?
Yes, exactly. There is a, we have a environmental consultant that has been, called Patriot Engineering, that works on our behalf. I asked him straight up the question, is this, I mean, is this cost, because they've been working with the developer on exactly how the geopiers need to be set, how many of them. They have confirmed that this number is a very, the 800,000 is a very conservative number.
What is that?
That means it's going to cost them more. But that's all they're asking for.
But it's only up to that? So they can't come back a year from now, then?
Right. If you take a look at what the YMCA did just on their building, the 750,000. Because, and it's not because of this, we knew, going back to your original comment, we knew the soils were, I hate to use the word contaminated, but they, the soils were not pure because of what existed on the site before with the CSX site. So we knew we had some restrictions on the use of that soil from a contamination standpoint. It wasn't until June 29th of 2021 that the company, Wabash River Equities, did some soil borings, where they found out the consistency of the soil wasn't compatible for compaction or use just of a standard foundation. So, that drove the need. So from June of 2021 until now, we've been evaluating what is the cost, how many of the geopiers, in quotes, all those kinds of things that have brought us to this $800,000 decision. So you are, you're right. We knew what the soils were from a contamination standpoint. We hadn't done any soil borings, or they hadn't done any soil borings until that day.
And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just had one question about this pickleball, and are we in that, can we talk about that also?
Yes, part of this financing.
So the pickleball splash thing and what have you. I have been, I mean, this has been going on, the splash pad, since Jesus was a little boy. We've been talking about this splash pad, but we're talking about this pickleball. And my concern is, is that we keep talking about adding the pickleball, and we still don't have places for people to live here. So, how much money will we be talking about for the pickleball?
Well, again, going back 200,000.
Okay, thank you.
And again, you're looking at building things for people to do when they decide that they want to live here in Peru, and they choose Peru. They choose Peru because of the things that they're hard for people to do. So, we're trying to make us, or let us have amenities like pickleball, or like golf, or some of those things for people to recreate and for families to do once they live here.
The people that will be coming in as opposed to the people that are living here?
No, and even the people that are here. I mean, pickleball, if you look at it, is one of the fastest growing sports that there is in the United States right now. Maybe there's not a lot of people here that play it, but I can assure you, if you look at it, from number one kind of sport, pickleball is growing. And it's not just for seniors. It's coming before to more younger folks. Look at it, look it up.
I've been, I've been looking it up, but Jim, the thing that I'm concerned with is above pickleball, people want a place to live.
And we're just getting ready to do 170 houses.
Well, that's a beautiful thing, too. I got my issues with that, too, because the gentleman that came down from Wabash, W R E or whatever, who said there was a list right now.
There is.
And I asked him after the meeting, and I was told somebody would get back with me. Because we have seniors here, we have individuals here who need to be on that list. So if there's a list?
That list, and, and, I, you know, I've answered this a couple of different times, and I know you've had this question. That list is not private. We have advertised, it's on our website, everywhere else where you can go, and people can contact and sign up to be, to let them know that they're interested in one of the housing units. So it's not a private list that I'm keeping, the developer's keeping. We want people. The more people we have on that list, the better the developer's going to feel in building this housing unit. So, the opportunity is there.
So let me make sure, because maybe I don't understand, because I've looked. The list is located where?
Not the list. The number is posted so that you can call the developer.
The developer is keeping the list. People need to call the developer and say, hey, I'm interested in one of these houses. Their name then will be put on the list with their contact info, so that when the appropriate time is, the developer can reach out to them and say, hey, this is where we're going to, units are going to be done, they're going to be ready to go.
Thank you.
Jim?
Hi, Jim.
I have a quick question, and I could be totally misunderstanding, but the 400,000 that Makita's putting in, is that from the TIF money?
Yes.
So that was going to be able to be used for something in our town, fixing up our town? Is that?
Well, that's why we, yes. I mean, it is part of the TIF funds across the whole town. That's why we're asking for a $200,000 contribution, one time, $200,000 contribution from the city, $200,000 contribution from the county, so we don't have to finance all that 800,000 through the TIF. So I do have some other money left to do some other things in the town through the TIF.
But are we obligated to cover that expense for the builder, since he's going to be owning the property?
Well, actually, we're using his money that he's paying in property taxes to pay that for.
That property taxes could be going for other things. I mean, like, when we pay property taxes, it goes to other areas of town.
Well, not, there's a difference between TIF, the property taxes that you pay is not in the TIF. So it basically goes into the county or the city in general as far as property taxes. The property taxes that they will be paying will be going into the TIF. Oh, for, yeah, for a period of time, and then after that period of time, then it'll be going back into the general.
And still, that was money we thought before this income came up, or this expense came up that was going to be able to be used in town?
No, because, again, we're using, if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have this revenue.
But they own the property.
Not yet.
No, but I mean, they're going to own that property.
They're going to own that property.
So you're giving them $800,000, it's increasing the value of that land?
No, it's, it's actually making the land more developed, because with the way it was, nothing was going to develop it. So we could not do the project, and there would not be any housing, and that property would probably stay there. The thing about it was that was not pristine property to begin with, to a normal developer that could come and develop that property without some type of assistance. So whether it's the housing, whether it's, I don't, I don't, the only thing that maybe would have not had to do anything with is we just laid, left it as maybe fields. But then, what's that going to do for the housing shortage, what that's going to do to grow the population, those kinds of things? Again, I go back to, we're taking $200,000 and investing it into a $20 million project, because there's going to be $20 million of construction built in the town that's going to bring people into the town that are going to live here, shop here, eat here, those kinds of things. Or, and they could be from out of town, let's hope. Because again, I'm not trying to slight anybody that lives here in town, but my hope is that we have people from out of town who move in, because that's the only way our population's going to improve.
And then they bring in tax dollars, all these people that?
They bring in local income tax dollars because they're employed, they bring in sales dollars for shopping in stores, all those kinds of things.
Can you have any questions?
I just have a comment. I struggle with this because, I mean, I want this complex for sure, but we've already given them the land, and we've given them this tax abatement, and now, I mean, like, when does it stop? And that we're giving them this to build with, and, so that's where my struggle is, is I feel like we've already given them so much.
They've already done $300,000 worth of work on that site right now. But they're not asking for reimbursement.
I'm sure.
And so, I mean, honestly, Becky, somebody?
Betsy.
Or Betsy, I'm sorry, excuse me. I mean, someone would have to come in. Again, if we wanted to just leave that as grown up and let it be, that's not for us.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying I just struggle. And like, the initial part of the process, you know, when we were getting construction companies, I just think, well, we didn't offer them the $800,000 to do this. Did we turn somebody away because, you know, this is just being given at the end here? So, that's just, that's just, those are the struggles. I don't know if other people are thinking those things, but those are some of the things that I just, you know, that I struggle with, just thinking, gosh, you know, we've given them quite a bit, and now we're giving them another 800,000.
Again, the, and I can only say this, you can't give something away that you don't have. What we did with the tax abate, it wasn't a tax abatement, but what we did, where we pledged back 70% over a period of times, was their own tax dollars that are being generated. Had no impact on any of the local taxes, existing taxes, or anything else. So that was their, strictly their taxes. And what I'm telling you now is that 30% that they were going to pay is probably going to be enough to cover, is going to be enough to cover this debt service that we're asking for for the $600,000. So again, we're not touching any existing taxes. The only thing that we're asking for is a one-time donation, or a non-donation pledge of 200,000 from Economic Development Income Tax, which should be used, I can't think of a better economic development project. When's the last time we've had a housing development in the city of Peru? I know I've been here 27, 28 years. I don't know the one.
I'm for the project, but I'm just saying.
No, I'm just trying to answer.
I'm for it. I want it to come, but I'm just saying, I'm just not for keeping, giving, you know, more money to it, so. That's my concern.
So like, when you had the park view heights in the 60s and 70s?
Yeah, and that's, I'm getting the same kind of questions, but I've talked with you, I've talked with Brooke, and I'm beginning to understand it. I just wish I could explain it to those who call me, you know, and ask questions, and, you know, I don't explain it as well as you do. But I get it, and I'm for the project as well. And I honestly, I don't think there's better $200,000 seed money to use, because we can't give this, I don't think we can throw a $20 million project away.
Hey, Jim, if you could maybe simplify for people, so this is an investment we're making.
There you go.
So, if we said the city's going to invest 200 grand in this $20 million project, we're going to get, the city's going to get a portion, or some of the taxes at some point are coming back to the city. Is that right?
And then, when the?
The 30%?
Well, the 30% would go stay in the TIF.
Okay.
That that's what could be used for other projects.
So, over the period of time, whenever the city starts receiving funds for property taxes, we could look at that and say, we're getting this much taxes on that property now, this $20 million property, which in 20 years might be?
now this $20 million property, which in 20 years might be $50 million.
Right. That's one of, that, when you, when you do a TIF or you do an abatement, you're not abolishing taxes forever. Okay? It's only during the abatement period. It's not like those housing units are going to go away in 20 years.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, is you could put a number to that, like, say, well, in 10 years, this is what the property taxes will be, speculating what they will be. How long does it take to get that return on investment? But you're also getting...
Right now, it's estimated, the assessed value on that property, once it's completed, will be about $16 million. Okay? So the property taxes are probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe $320,000 a year, something like that.
What percentage?
So, now, that's today. Now, what, as assessment and costs continue to increase, what that'll be in 20 years? I mean, again, but you're making a $200,000 investment today for the future to build the city and build and increase overall population.
Has the county, has the county committed their $200,000?
No, basically, they won't commit until, if they say, look, we're willing to consider it, we want to make sure the city's on board.
It's a done thing.
Jim, it's six o'clock.
You have anything else? So, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask for your motion to approve and adopt, considering the adopt resolution 4 day, 4 dash 22, and then also authorize the secretary, in this case, Tom Guston, to sign the report, and to present that in the city council meeting coming up tomorrow, if you'd like. Please, sir, just take this into consideration. Sandy?
Yes, so moved.
Huh?
Yes.
And I vote this also. Vote for adopting this, Sandy?
Yes, so moved.
Huh?
Yes.
And I also approve. And, go ahead and sign this. Oh, you already signed it? Sandy, I'll catch up with you on the resolution.
Okay.
It's okay.
Thank you, Mary. Sorry we ran over.
That's all right.
Thanks, Sandy. On the other side, I'll...
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll end the public meeting on additional appropriations at 6:02. Call the regular Peru City Council.
No, no, no.
We still have...
Public meeting yet.
So, yeah, call the public meeting to order.
You haven't called it yet.
We will have to wait 15 minutes, though.
We'll have to wait 15 minutes now.
You'll have to call this one to order.
Okay. Go ahead and call the public meeting on additional appropriations to order at 6:03.
I want to read what that is.
I believe there's two parts to this. One is for our continuing education with the police department. The state, a year ago, did away with fees for handgun permits, and the money that was collected from handgun permits went into continuing education. We collected anywhere between $8,000 and $10,000 a year for gun permits. The state has done away with that. They did a one-time option where you could prove how many gun permits you collected over a year. You wrote a grant. They sent us back, I think, $83, 50 of the $8,500 we normally collect. So we're asking for $5,000 of that check that's finally came to be put in our continuing education, and the rest put in the non-reverting account to hopefully keep that going for a few more years. And hopefully, the state will figure out how to replace that funding that's been taken to the gun permits. And now that they're the constitutional carry, we probably won't see that many gun permits anyway. So it was kind of a two-year phase in. We still do the paperwork for gun permits. We, there's just no fee to collect. Any questions on that? The second part was about perf. Apparently, before the budget was done, I don't know if it was a week or two, we were going through the numbers, getting ready for the budget, and found out that the numbers were miscalculated for perf. They were figured for civilian perf, and none of the police and fire was figured for the 17.5% that police and fire that the city pays into perf. It was too late to address it when it came up, so that's why we're here today.
Who does those calculations?
It's done upstairs.
Lori?
One of the girls upstairs.
Susan? Somebody from the clerk's office?
Yeah. Those numbers are calculated, we don't calculate them. To be honest, I rarely look at them. It was just a fluke. We came across them when we did, or we probably wouldn't have found out till about right now.
So what line item is that on here?
I have no idea.
Is it the 161?
161, 228.
Where it says personal services.
It's on every good, it's on this one here. If you go to this page, you can see which ones are which.
So this is because, if I understand correctly, there wasn't enough in the budget to...
There's not enough in the budget to fund it for the year, because...
This is the itemized.
I don't know. I think it was 100 and some thousand, 150,000 short of what it's supposed to be. It's roughly about $10,000. An employee is what the city's contribution is. It's a little less than that, after we got it figured up, and everybody figured out what the percentage was.
Is this the first time that it's ever been calculated incorrectly, or have you had that happen in recent years?
It's never, it's never been miscalculated. It's always, I mean, it increases every year. We get a raise, it goes up. And it's, it's just like, when we get raises on the budget, we don't calculate the 3%, 4%. Those numbers are all figured upstairs. We probably should double-check and make sure.
Right.
They're, they're doing it correctly, but...
And so where does the 161, I mean, I know it's going into your LOAT fund, but where does, where did it come from? Where is it taken from?
What, the 161?
Yeah.
It's from LOAT, and then it's put into the account for perf.
Okay, so it's going from LOAT to perf?
Right. And that's so the city can pay our retirement.
Can you address what happened, Susan? You're giving the wrong percentage. It was under the assumption that the percentage, 11.2, was used across the board. And then it was... Percentage of? Civilian perf was 11.2. Okay. It was a misunderstanding that the perf was figured at 11.2 across the board for everybody. It was later discovered that police and fire is 17.5, not 11.2. So I went back and did a recalculation. And this is additional, then. Dustin, is it possible to, well, never mind. Yeah. Is it possible to approve part of this and not some of it? Or does it all, is it all one thing?
Are you talking about certain line items within the request itself? I mean, you'd have to, a motion to amend, make, amend whatever changes you would like, and obviously put that to a vote. If it's, those amendments are approved, then vote to approve the actual appropriation ordinance.
There's about $600,000 worth of money being moved around here. And we just had, in February, appropriations done, too. So just since the budget been done, adopted, we had two rounds of appropriation already, and we're just four months into the year.
I, I can't control that.
No, we did not have appropriations. We had transfers. The money was already there.
They were listed as appropriations. I went back and watched the February meeting.
They're called appropriation transfers, but they're not appropriations. It's money that was already appropriated, transferred.
So this is $600,000. So I see what Kathleen's saying, like, you know, there are some things I might agree with on here, but not all, all of it. But we have to vote for it all as one chunk in this resolution?
No. Like I said, you could vote to amend, amend the ordinance, or the resolution as presented. Then, obviously, a passing vote on that amendment, and then you could vote to pass it as amended or as presented.
Do we have all this money?
Yes, sir. Where do we have it? Which money? $600,000, $553,000. Where is it? Like he just told you, the $200,000 is coming out of SEAT, correct? Right, yeah. So you know where $200,000 is. Right. The other is coming out of LOAT and out of fire territory fund. That's where your perf's paid out of, correct?
Yeah.
And then, did you not get your back sheet? Yes, I did. Did that not tell you where they all come from? I don't know where they all come from. That's what that was for. So then, special fire territories, perf, street sanitation, his money is from his non-reverting fund, that has nothing to do with taxpayer appropriated, you know. What is the promotion of city? That is NeoGov. Okay. Okay.
If we have the money, I can't see piecemealing stuff. We need to pay it.
Well, you have to pay the perf. Yeah, we have to. Now, with the $200,000, that's entirely optional. Are there some things in, in, in being set up so this kind of thing doesn't happen, these kind of mistakes don't happen again? Do you, do you have, do you have ways to make so this... What kind of mistakes are you talking about? That was a one-time mistake. No, I'm pretty sure, it's pretty obvious now that the percentages are right. No, I mean in the future. Like, when it comes to budget season, you know, because we're going to start working on budgets in July, are there, are there, is it managed to be, so it won't, these kind of mistakes won't happen again for the perf? Shouldn't be. It's pretty clear, cut and clear now that fire and police are 17.5, and civilian perf is figured 11.2. The reason I'm asking, Susan, I'm not trying to be a smart aleck. I'm asking because, like Betsy said, this is only for...
Call the question.
Pardon?
Call the question, it's been answered.
I beg your pardon?
I said I'm calling the question, it's been answered.
So we'll be set for next year?
Yes, sir.
No problem.
No problem. Are you, Pat?
I mean, one of the things that came up, when we figured out the perf was...
What'd you say, Dustin?
The civilians weren't even in the budget for the police department. But they were paying them out of the law enforcement perf section. And that, I went back on budgets, back in the other administration, there was never a line item for our civilians that were in perf.
Okay.
And part of that was probably due to, one was part-time, two were full-time, but they didn't have enough time on the department, where it was such a small amount, nobody even worried about it. Where now they, now we know they need to be added.
And I understand the money's there. I don't question that. But I just, you know, we're just April, and this is a lot of money. Anyway, thank you. Are you discussing the, never mind, beg your pardon, the NeoGov, is that you, or?
I know very little about it, other than it's an online service for applications, where it'll make it easier to market for employees, where it puts it on the web. The application is filled out online, and then it's sent to Human Resources, which would be Kristen, and then it screens them if they're, if they meet the qualifications for the job, and then she would send them to the department they're applying for.
So this just isn't for the police department, this is for the whole city to utilize this system?
And what Assistant Chief Feller said, that it doesn't have a, not a contract for three years.
No.
It's renewable every year. So if this doesn't work out, or we're not happy with it, the city, then we call it quits.
Well, there is a, there is a three-year to be able to get that price break, because we get a 50% reduction the first year, if we sign the three-year, but we do pay annually. So it could be budgeted for next year in our budget.
How much is it?
It's $10,700 for this year.
But, as he said, if we vote not to appropriate money next year...
Then it's done anyway.
Then the contract is done. So we have a three-year, we're not bound for the three years. They're not going to come back and sue us if we don't fulfill it.
So just so the public knows what we're talking about, it's a, they're looking into purchasing that program that people can apply, like through Indeed, or Monster, or whatever, right?
It should make it easier for a college kid who's more tech savvy than me to find us.
And you can do interviews online, correct? You can do interviews, you can through the portal.
That I can't answer.
Yeah.
Kristen would be able to answer a lot of these questions.
Yeah, Kristen, please.
I can actually contact her representative. She's waiting for a caller, and I'd be like to speak with them.
That's, I spent a lot of time talking with Matt, so it's just up to, it's up to the...
If there's specific questions, he'd be able to answer them. If not, you could give more of an insight of what your department would benefit from it.
So, basically, you can fill out, the applications will all be posted online for each department.
Kristen, can you walk over?
Kristen.
Oh, I am so sorry. Okay. So all the applications will be posted online for each department of the city. As Chief Sofiana said, it'll go through HR, kind of be screened. If you're not qualified for the position, it, I don't want to say kick it out, but it'll kind of weed through them some. You can put specific, like, if Adam would need a CDL, you can put, okay, this job requires a CDL. So then somebody with a CDL could put a notification, well, I'm CDL, I'm looking for this specific job, or I'm a police officer and I want a lateral. There's all sorts of qualification opportunities, I suppose.
Could, would you mind getting him on, so we could, you know, is that okay? I mean, you know some of the, I just want to know if that's the portal, that you can do interviews on there?
You can communicate with the applicants through it. I don't, I believe you could probably do like a Skype or a Zoom.
Okay.
I mean, kind of just depends what the department head would like to do.
It's, so Assistant Chief Feller also said that they would train you...
That's correct.
With, I mean, no more extra money than this $10,000, that they would train you.
Yep. Yeah. So I apologize, we only know the basics of it, because everything comes with training, obviously, so.
One of my questions that I had was, like, does any other cities our size have it? And they sent me, they, they sent me the answer to that, and there really wasn't. I mean, it was like Noblesville, Corvus.
They're a little bit bigger, yeah.
Yeah, there wasn't anybody. And I just wondered, how many positions are we actually looking for? Would it justify $10,000 a year to have this service?
Well, it does, the HR side of it does do more than just the application process. It will do the, like, the internal control papers that I've sent out, asking for, keep all of the onboarding information, the tax documents, the, like I said, the internal control, the, everything, basically, to be compliant as a city. It'll keep track of all of that. People, the officers, other employees can get to their training and things from there. They offer all sorts of training on this site. I believe there was even like an Excel training you could access right from their website. You could do, Assistant Chief Feller talked about a QR code. You could put, you could hand out a flyer, like at the Easter egg hunt. You could have an officer handing out flyers. Take a picture of this, you can apply right from your phone.
So I understand why it's now a promotional city, of city. That makes sense, because it is going to promote the city, yeah, and officers and fire department. Chief Rock, where are you? Do you know about this?
I know, I don't.
This has been more through...
This has been more through the police department, is what, Matt's the one that found this, and trying to find other options of way of getting a wider net of employment, and he's the one that's done the research on this.
Yeah, I just wonder why Chief Hawke wouldn't be pulled into this conversation.
It was just a basic, Assistant Chief Feller did some research, went through a few different companies, and NeoGov is the one that we like, and...
And I agree. I think it's a good, a good option, and we need to come into the 24th century instead of having people come here and writing out, you know, handwritten applications.
Yeah, yeah, this will definitely bring us into that.
Right, yeah, what we're doing.
And this is a nationwide thing.
Yeah. And we're accepting Chief Sofianis. We're, this will help with transferring, correct, or lateral transfers and...
It'll just help, hopefully, people find us easier.
Yeah, right now we have Facebook. That's how we get our employment.
Twitter.
It'll post to, GovernmentJobs.com is the main one.
Okay.
Indeed, Monster. Right now, if, as a city, we were going to post a job to Indeed, you would have to pay by click. So if I were looking to be a police officer, and I clicked that job for here, and I'm like, mm, I don't think I really like that. We get charged for that click, even if they don't apply. With this company, if we choose to pay a small lump sum to post to Indeed, we're not charged by click. It's charged just basically to post it.
And I understand that it's just been a small group of people that invested and looked into this. I just, my concern is why Chief Hawke or, you know, who, you know, does quite a bit of hiring or, you know, periodically, why, you know, that's a pretty significant, this is nothing against you, Kristen. You know, this is a, this is a pretty significant, you know, that all department heads make.
I'm sure every department head will be brought in.
Yep. Would you, do you want me to call Alex?
No, I, I, no, I just, that's just my concern, you know, that department heads, you know, haven't been made aware of it, so.
Well, it's still kind of in the getting to know stages, so.
So if we adopt this, approve this today, when do you get started?
Uh, we'd have to contact them to see about training and things like that. I imagine within a month, a couple of months. I mean, it kind of just depends on their schedule and how they have training set up.
All right.
Is that it?
I don't have any more questions, Kristen.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, public, yeah, we need to ask the public if they have comments, correct?
Right.
Yeah, come back up here, please. Just ask the public if they...
Does the public have any questions?
And it's not just for her, but for any of the appropriate...
Oh, yeah, okay.
Public hearings.
Thank you.
No?
About this HR program, I don't understand, because I do think this is highly expensive. And I work with Indeed, I work with Helmets, to a lot of the government programs, because that was my question. There are a lot of prior service members who are looking for small-town investment, looking for jobs and what have you. We haven't even went through those free programs yet. So I keep hearing about spending money, and I don't understand spending money, that by all looks of this community, we don't have to spend. And when I hear that certain departments are not opining on this, that's problematic to me, because each one of them will have to do that. So my question is, is this something that's coming up today for a vote, and is the vote whether or not you're going, we're going to spend the money on this?
Yes, I believe that is.
So that's where it's at right now?
Today, right now, yes, is the decision.
And that's, that's my concern too, is I think that it would be good to...
It's all locked together. Everything's locked together in one resolution, Stephanie. Like, we are voting for this. We are voting to fix the perp issues and miscalculations. I mean, we're, it's all in one, $500,000.
Yeah, I kind of...
And just to be clear, you're voting to appropriate the money for those expenditures. No contract has been signed with, what is it, in?
NeoGov.
Yeah, NeoGov. Nothing's been signed with them, so it's not a done deal that you'll use them, though, but if, if you decide to move forward with that, money's appropriated, that would allow you to do so.
Could we amend this, table this one thing, and get with the department heads to have a conversation about this? I mean, with that, I mean, they're the ones that will be using it.
If that's the will of the council, then you certainly could do that.
Chief Hawke, where are you at with this? What's your opinion, please?
This is the first I've heard of it, so I mean, I don't know. I'm not going to judge it, because I don't know anything about it. I just know we're equal opportunity employer, approved by department. We accept all applications, and as applications come in, then we do our screen ourselves. This might be a great thing. I just don't know, because I'm not educated on it.
Jim?
No, I was just going to go back to Justin's, or Dustin's thing. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with names tonight. It's my older age. I apologize for that. But I think what you could do is, again, going back, is that you're appropriating the money. So if your money's appropriated, it doesn't mean that it necessarily has to be spent. You know, you can get into the contract negotiation, make sure everybody's on board. If you spend the money, okay. If you don't, it just stays in the account, but at least it's appropriated. So, I mean, that, to me, would be kind of the recommendation, is just go ahead and appropriate the funds, which is only action you're taking on the internet in contracts.
So if and when a contract's signed, does that come through here?
No, and it'd be a type of contract that the mayor would have the authority to find the city on.
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Public hearing, you have to...
I'm sorry. You're right. I apologize. Thanks, Kristen. Is that your name, Kristen or Kirsten?
Kristen.
Thank you.
Yes. Nobody? Okay.
Am I up now?
Yeah.
Hello. Sorry, I felt like I yelled. Okay, just to touch, basically, I'm here to see about getting approved for a 2022 Chevy Silverado, one-ton dump truck, and a 2008 bucket truck. The bucket truck will basically replace the 1994 bucket truck we have right now. There's a couple benefits with the new truck. One is it's automatic, so you can just push a button, whereas the 94 is stick. So there's, I want to say three of us that can actually drive that truck down there right now. You'll have to excuse me. I misplaced my water bottle.
I got germs, though.
No. The 2022 one-ton I'm also hoping to get approved for, basically looks like that. This is our 2016, but it'll be pretty much the same thing. It's important to note that the purchases that I'm hoping to be approved for aren't really coming out of taxpayers' money. These are all, it's coming out of the special sanitation and CCI. The dump trucks that we rent for people, that money all goes into a non-reverting account, and it just builds. So all this would come out of that.
So you're asking for your own money?
Pretty much. The 2008 bucket truck is with Dillman Enterprise. He's, he's offered $16,000 for a 1997 payloader we have for trade-in. So the truck itself, I would actually only need $6,500. And then the one-ton is $45,461. So the total, I guess, I'm asking, is $51,961 to be spent out of the non-reverting account.
They have you down for $52,500, so.
Okay. That amount is mine.
Minus your trade-in, you're in at $52,500.
Okay. My apologies. Are there any?
You can't have all your money. You just get a little bit of it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said you can't have all your money. You just get a little bit of it.
Well, yeah. Are there any questions?
How soon would you be able to get your truck? Is that something that's available?
Yeah, immediately, so.
Bucket truck included?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Questions from the public?
Is that right?
Thanks, Adam.
I'm learning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask another question? You're fine, thank you, about what we were talking about with Kristen. If, Mayor, can you, if this gets appropriated today, would you commit to, before a contract is signed, meet with every department head and get their feedback?
Yeah, it's also something that Assistant Chief Feller would be doing with me.
Yeah.
I would have no problem with that.
Okay, great. So before, sorry, so we've got your commitment that you will meet, and Chief Feller, and I think Steve's involved in this as well, would meet and get feedback from, before any contract's signed?
Yeah.
Is that fair, Kristen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I need to make a motion for a recess for just a few minutes?
Okay. Public hearing can be closed if there's no further comment from the audience. We can go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay.
Before you call the regular scheduled meeting, take the brief recess if you need it.
Right. We'll take a five, 10-minute recess.
Okay.
And then call the regular meeting to order.
Kristen, thank you. I'm just trying to...
I'd have everyone's attention. City Pre-City Council come to order Monday, April the 4th, 2022, at 6:41 PM. Called meeting to order. Everybody stand. Have the pledge of allegiance led by Pat remain standing for Pastor Brent Wedding and the perp.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness to us. We thank you for this city that we live in, and our elected officials, and our civil servants and volunteers that all work together to make this a great community. We pray that you would continue to bless the city council, to give them wisdom and understanding. We pray that you would keep your hand upon our, our law enforcement, our fire department. We pray that you'd bless our schools, our economic system, that you would just put your favor upon the city of Peru. We thank you for our troops. We pray for our military, for your continued hand of safety upon them. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Here.
Dustin.
Here.
Floso.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Fahed Ashini.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Reading and correcting a journal, last-minute meeting. Hearing none. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes as read and printed.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as...
Second.
Second, that second.
Tom got it, Tom.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Floso.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Fahed Ashini.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Council liaison communications. We'll start with Betsy and go right straight on down the line.
I have nothing to report.
The street department knows about all the alleys, because I got some information last night that there are some alleys that need to be repaved. But I went to the street department. They know about it, but they can't do anything about it until it dries up. Plus, they're working on the streets first. And North Broadway, they're trying to get it done before the circus. The Wayne Street Bridge is expected to be done by the end of May. I found that out today. And also, the animal control has five dogs looking for their owners. Plus, one dog the other day was strapped around a pole, and one of the officers was able to pick it up and take it to the dog pound, to the animal control. So that's not a very good situation for the dog or anybody else. I mean, it was out there in no man's land, and he just happened to see it and get it. The county commissioners took bids today. They had five bids on the demolition possibility of the old jail, and that's under advisement at this particular time. So I got.
The ordinance review committee, I talked with concerning the ordinance 422 to amend the future growth of Peru and other committees. I communicated with Steve and Betsy, and we'll discuss that further when under old business. With Makita, they are working on potential reuses for Plant 2, correct, the Snyder Building, and also United Tech. So there's nothing solid right now, but things are happening. I don't have anything, the future growth committee will be discussed in unfinished business. I'm done.
Okay. Under Board of Works, the contract between the city and the FOP was accepted at the March 15th meeting. There's going to be a block party on East 5th between Benton and Godfrey on May 7th. And I wanted to congratulate on your retirement from the fire department, Gary Davenport, after 35 and a half years, and thank him for his service. The aviation department has a date for their fly-in on July 30th. The Huey organization will be there. Civic Center has an activity report. They had 10 scheduled events for March. A total of $1,305 was generated, and all of it went to the city. The planning commission has several things coming up this evening. That's all I've got.
I've got nothing.
I have nothing as well.
I have nothing. I'm sorry.
All right, moving right along. Unfinished business. City of Peru Common Council, ordinance number four. Need motion to open ordinance number four and vote.
We open it for discussion, correct?
Motion to take it off the table.
And make a motion that we take ordinance four off the table.
Roll call.
Hang on one second. Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Floso?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahed Ashini?
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
We open it for discussion, Dustin? Is that...
It's off the table, and there had previously been a motion to consider, so you can...
I move we consider number four.
It was already considered?
It's already been considered.
Right, you can go right into discussions if it's off the table.
Matthew, are you going to come up? And I guess Dustin's going to help discuss this.
Hi.
Hi.
So, basically, after our discussion this morning, if you just want to amend it how you see fit, that's pretty much up to you guys.
And let me, let me just bring everybody up to date. Today, we had great conversations with Matthew and, and Mayor Hewitt. And I've talked with, you know, like I said, Betsy and, and Steve. And I had a wonderful phone conversation with Dustin. And the front row people are some of the people that are on that committee. So, here's what I would like to amend. And I don't know how to do this. You said you would help me with the language.
Yes, so you could, you could propose an amendment under section B and add would be number eighteen. And eighteen would be just future growth of Peru. And, and just being a liaison assignment. I mean, it's not a city board, or it's not going to be a city committee, per se, but it's just going to be a public committee that's formed by the public. And that liaison can attend those public gatherings and come back and report to the city if they so choose.
And that, if, so we don't take the, the committee off? And if, at the time when Mayor Hewitt or a future mayor wants to bring it back or activate it, he can't.
Right, separate from what's happening now.
Okay.
From the, the private public meetings too.
So, according to the people in attendance, they have decided that there's no real benefit being attached to the city. In fact, it would probably be easier to just do what they want to do and love what they do. And, I mean, it's, I've got a whole list here that if anybody wants to see of things that have come out of this committee. And one of them is going to be the first annual, you know, arts festival. And then tomorrow night, you know, we're going to a thing that we're working on, a community garden. You know, I told that with Mayor. And so many other things. We're going to be helping out at Griston Air Force Base with United Way and.
So, are you going to amend this?
I'm, can I, I can, it's for conversation, discussion right now, right? Thank you. And there's a lot of good things that are coming out of it. So, they have decided it's going to be named, tentatively, community, this one, Community Action Partnership. That's just tentative. For, you know, so, they will continue to do all the goodness in the world and be an advocate for the community. I will continue to work with them. If Peter wants to do that, great. And they can come and report anytime they want, correct?
Correct. There's no need for them to be bootstrapped by the open door law.
Yeah.
So, it's called community?
Community Action Partnership, but.
Action partnership.
Yeah, that's up to.
Kathleen, I think that's great. But I want you to know, we have Circus Band. We have the Cole Porter Festival. We have the Richard Quigley Music Festival. All of those things are out there and a part of our community, but they're not here. I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
But I think that's great, and I'm glad you guys are trying to do something. We need it.
Yeah, because they're part of it is, we have somebody who may donate some property or let us use some property for a community garden.
Uh-huh.
And so, we're in the process of tomorrow evening, we're going to go to Marion and meet with Empowering Youth. And this could be, I mean, so many things. You know, working with the Miami Indians and promoting them. It's on small business.
Thing is, they don't need us.
They don't need us. No, initially, we thought they did. But they are wonderful people and they're working with, with Brooke for, on the nineteenth, for Makita to, for small business, uh, wins, small business make. So, anyway, I make a motion to amend.
Section B subsection, or to amend the ordinance as presented to include sub-paragraph eighteen and then future growth of Peru under B. So, you'd just be adding that in there. That, the way it's still there, if the mayor wants to activate it or down the road, some future administration wants it, they have it there, so.
So, by you saying that, is that good? I have to say, okay, amend section B under.
Number eighteen?
Yeah, it'd be a motion to amend the ordinance as presented to include sub-paragraph eighteen under chapter, or section thirty-one eighteen B.
Okay. Can somebody say that? So, amend section, amend.
Thirty-one, number eighteen.
Section B.
Number eighteen.
Betsy, you.
So, just.
I can't.
Here, simply.
I can't.
Make a motion to amend the ordinance as presented to include a, uh, sub-paragraph eighteen under section B.
Amend the ordinance.
To include.
To include, I'm sorry, I have some memory problems because of some neurological issues.
You're fine.
I can't read.
Subchapter eighteen under section B.
So, can somebody say that? Tom, you can say that, can't you?
What?
I'm sorry, Betsy, I just.
I'll do it, I'll do it.
They don't need us.
Yeah, I just can't.
Girls don't need us.
No, but we're making the amendment. We're making the amendment.
I also want to add others, so.
It has to be legal. As I say, are you going to do one amendment for all the changes?
I want to add more than just eighteen.
Okay.
So, what else? And you need to discuss, and I would make one, one motion to include that, or you can make sep- separate motions. It makes no difference.
Okay.
Once it gets done.
I would like to add, since Aviation Board is not on there and Planning Commission is not on there under subsection B eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. So, eighteen would be Community Action Partnership, nineteen Aviation Board, and twenty Planning Commission.
Thank you, Pat.
Eighteen, eighteen would still be Future Growth of Peru. Nineteen would be Aviation. And what was twenty?
Planning Commission.
I apologize for making it a little bit chaotic. I just have some deficits.
Does that make sense, Dustin?
It does, but I don't have my ordinances in front of me. If I'm not mistaken, the Planning Commission Board specifically delineates that it's not a liaison assignment, it's an actual appointment to the board.
Right.
Which Pat's on.
It is.
Right.
It is.
When it, under, under.
Under voting members.
Would not be appropriate, or.
So, should not be here?
Never mind, I forgot how we're amending it and the language in there. It is, it would be appropriate there. It, that's one of the reasons and benefits to changing the ordinance.
Okay.
Sorry, Dustin.
No, you're fine.
I get appointed to it, so I should just sit here. So, do we need to make an amendment?
Someone's gonna have to make a motion with all that language she said earlier.
So, I'm just waiting for him to say yes or no.
Give a second on the amendment.
I don't think, I don't think anyone likes to make a motion to amend it. I was writing it down. I don't know how to read it.
Is that okay?
I'm sorry.
Is that okay to go ahead and proceed?
Yes, if someone makes a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance number four under thirty-one dot one eight, section B, to add number eighteen, future growth.
Of Peru.
Of Peru. Number nineteen Aviation Board. Number twenty Planning Commission.
Why, why do you want Aviation Board on both things?
Because number nine, uh, up at the top, there is a standing committee for Aviation Board, which is totally different from a liaison position.
Ones to, ones to go to the board, watch, come back. Ones for the council, you guys to actually use and utilize.
Thanks.
Okay. I just need a second.
A second.
Kathleen seconded.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Closo.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Fahed Ashini.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Now, there needs to be a vote, our motion and a vote to approve the ordinance as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance, uh, the amended ordinance, number four twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
As amended.
As amended. Mark.
Mark seconded.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Closo.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Fahed Ashini.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Thank you, Matt.
My fault. Goodness.
Okay, moving on under new business. Additional appropriation resolution number nine dash twenty-twenty-two. Need a motion to consider resolution number nine, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to consider resolution number nine, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Closo.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Fahed Ashini.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Anything under discussion on resolution nine dash twenty-twenty-two? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to adopt resolution nine dash twenty-twenty-two?
I make a motion to adopt resolution nine dash twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Somebody second.
Mark.
Mark, oh, Mark.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Closo.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yeah.
Russell.
Yes.
Fahed Ashini.
Yes.
Wolf.
No.
Okay, moving on, next order of business. City of Peru Common Council, ordinance number six dash twenty-twenty-two, and ordinance to amend ordinance twelve, two thousand nine.
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number six, twenty-twenty-two.
Second. Steve, with you.
Yes.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Closo.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Fahed Ashini.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Discussion? Seeing none, entertain.
Yeah, wait, hold on.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this the ordinance I.
Yeah, I think you want to pull this one?
Yeah, if we can. I got a couple more things I'd like to look into.
So, you want us to table it, or?
Yeah, I just, I mean, get rid of it all together.
Get rid of it all together?
Or tables, right?
Table.
Well, do you want it brought back up or bring it back next month?
Do you want to bring it up next month?
Okay.
Give me another month, how about that?
We'll table it. We'll consider and then table.
Yes, you can do that still. Because there's been no motion for a vote, so you can still table it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, make a motion to table.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Second.
Roll call.
We're tablebing number six.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Closo.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Fahed Ashini.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Next order of business. Ordinance number seven dash twenty-twenty-two, and ordinance of the Common Council of City of Peru, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of the City of Peru, Indiana, Economic Development Revenue Note of twenty-twenty-two, Wabash River Equities Infrastructure Project and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto.
I make a motion that we consider ordinance number seven dash twenty-twenty-two.
My second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Closo.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Discussion?
Thanks to Pat Russell for, she went up and took some pictures of Tippi Downs, uh, which is a similar housing development that our consultants have done. Those are available, if you'd like to pass those around to take a look at them, since it relates to this project. Again, thank you very much. Before we actually get into the, as part of the process, for your consideration of the, the resol- or the ordinance, we had a public hearing with the Economic Development Commission. That's a requirement. Anytime we're looking at expending TIF funds is to have a public hearing of the people that were present, Joe Mullenax, Tom Guston, and Sandy Chidham by phone. So, at this time, they passed a resolution and I would ask the Secretary of the Economic Development Commission, Mr. Guston, to report on the findings and recommendations of the, of the commission.
This is the report of the City of Peru Economic Development Commission concerning the proposed financing of economic development facilities for the Wabash River Equities LLC. The City of Peru Economic Development Commission, the commission proposes to recommend to the Common Council of the City of Peru, Indiana, and it provides the proceeds of certain economic development revenue notes to the Wabash River Equities for the financing of certain economic development facilities in the city. In connection therewith, the commission hereby reports as follows. A, the proposed economic development facilities consist of the financing of certain housing and related infrastructure in the City of Peru, Indiana, all located within the consolidated allocation area for the project. B, the commission estimates that no public works or services, including public ways, schools, water, sewer, street lights, and fire protection will be made necessary or desirable, desirable by the project because any such works or services already exist or will be provided by the project itself or by applicant or other parties. C, the commission estimates that the total cost of the financing of the project will be approximately twenty million dollars, of which the city portion will not exceed six hundred thousand dollars. D, the commission estimates that the project will create and retain jobs in the near term, will produce at least a hundred and twenty-five temporary construction jobs and four full-time jobs and in the longer term will result in the retention of more jobs in the city. And E, this is the last part of it, the commission finds that the project will not have a material adverse competitive effect on similar facilities already constructed or operating in the City of Peru, Indiana. That's the report. That's the report. If you have questions, Mr. Tid is available.
Thank you, Tom. And again, uh, tonight, we are here asking, uh, the County Council to consider ordinance number seven. Uh, this ordinance, again, goes back and kind of is the last closing bit of action that needs to take place between the initial pledge resolution by the Miami County Economic Development Authority, pledging TIF revenues that it manages on behalf of the city, um, to help support, uh, this project, and then also the, um, Economic Development Commission's, um, report and their finding and recommended approval. So tonight, with the ordinance, you would also be approving what's called the note, the revenue note of twenty twenty-two, which is in your packet, which would be twenty twenty-two R1. And then also the financing agreement that it would, is being proposed between Wabash Rivers Equity LLC and the City of Peru as of April first. These documents have all been reviewed, uh, by city attorney. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, uh, about the project. Again, this is for the financing of six hundred thousand dollars. Four hundred thousand to go to the developer in partnership with the two hundred thousand that you approved. One-time contribution out of SEDIT, and then also our expectation is the county's approval of two hundred thousand as well. And then, uh, the other two hundred thousand, so again, that's four hundred of the six hundred we're proposing to finance. The other two hundred thousand would go to, uh, the construction of four pickleball courts in that area along the riverwalk. One other thing I forgot, the, and he made it back. I was also going to say, because someone asked in the, in the, um, public hearing, uh, the benefits, you know, what are going to be the benefits to the city? And again, in, in addition to the additional increase in hopefully population, the additional spending in the downtown, I believe it's also going to benefit Peru utilities from the standpoint of having a hundred and seventy more housing units onboard, even though they're residential. But you're talking about water, sewer, fire protection, uh, power, uh, to help over the long term spread out some of the cost, which I can't, I know Josh would never say this, or, you know, would agree to it, but it'll help definitely with future maybe costs, is we're able to spread that money over additional users on the system. But happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just have one question. Is the company going to hire any local builders, construction personnel?
They have asked, uh, for a listing of some of the contractors, local contractors. They have a lot, they do this mainly on their own, but a lot of the things they sub out is for air, heating, electrical.
Right.
Those kind of things, because they just don't have the capacity. But the main construction, uh, they probably have that capacity to do in-house, but they've asked us for certain lists of local contractors. I think their intent is to hire where they're needed and when they can.
Who's responsible to take care of the grounds outside? Who's responsible to cut the grass and all that?
They are.
They are?
They are. It's again, this is a, um, a managed, uh, property. That's why none of the houses are being sold, they're all leased. They will maintain the property, the landscaping, um, and again, touring some of their facilities. It's very well maintained and they have a great reputation of, of doing that. So it's all based on their contractors. Now, they may farm that out, they may contract with the local, uh, grass cutter to do that, rather than, I think the staff that they're talking about, the four people, would probably be a maintenance supervisor, but then a lot of people in the office handling the rental contracts and those kind of things. So the maintenance of the property could be farmed out to some of our local landscape folks.
Jim, the lady that I talked to at Tippi River Downs told me she had been with the company sixteen years. So that tells you a little bit about the longevity of their employees. And the grounds were very well kept, that Warsaw, you drove around, there was nothing on the grounds that was messy, or the grounds were all nicely manicured, everything looked nice. And, and actually, a lady tipped her head out the door as I was taking pictures, and she asked me, pretty much asked me why I was taking pictures. And I told her that we were going to build something like that here, and she was affirmative in her joy that we were going to build something like that here, so.
Going back to the reference checks we did with some of the other municipalities, that they have built houses in Warsaw being one, Elwood, Plymouth, uh, you know, the mayor of Elwood told me I'd love to have them back anytime, you know, because they do what they say they're going to do, and they, uh, constructed a nice project, or a nice product. Any other questions that I can help with?
Any questions from the audience? Any other questions?
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance number seven, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Faidachne?
Yes.
Whoa.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, next order of business. Ordinance number eight, dash twenty twenty-two. An ordinance to vacate a north-south alley in the City of Peru at two sixty-five East Third.
The plan.
Do you have a motion to consider ordinance number eight, twenty twenty-two?
My move, we consider number eight.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Faidachne?
Yes.
Yes.
I got him online, but.
All right, Haley?
Okay, uh, the Plaine Commission gives a favorable recommendation to vacate the north-south alley, um, eight to zero.
Discussion?
I'm, I'm just curious, hey, what, what's the advantage of that now?
The advantage of it?
Yeah.
Um, so, one, the one person on, in two sixty-five East Third gets half of that alley, and then the other people that the vacant lot is sitting in, they get the other half. And it kind of helps with traffic flow, like it doesn't let, allow, people can't go through there anymore.
Will they pay taxes on that?
Yes.
Any questions from the public?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number eight, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Seconded by Tom, roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Faidachne?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
All right, moving on, next order of.
Was that the consider, was that the adopt, sorry?
That was to adopt.
Okay, sorry, my fault.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance number nine. It's an ordinance to rezone in the City of Peru, six zero eight West Main.
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number nine, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Faidachne?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
Discussion?
The Plaine Commission gives a rec, a favorable recommendation to rezone six oh eight West Main, R1 to a B3, um, eight to zero.
Any questions?
Why?
It's been a business forever, they had a variance and now they. Yep. They've been a business for a very long time in that area, but there's always been a variance set in place, and he just wants to get it rezoned to it.
They might, might have known that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number nine, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Faidachne?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
All right, next order of business. Ordinance number ten. Ordinance number ten's an ordinance to rezone in the City of Peru, two eighteen East Fifth Street.
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number ten, twenty twenty-two.
My second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Faidachne?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
Okay, the Plaine Commission gives a favorable recommendation, eight to zero, to rezone two eighteen East Fifth, from an R1 to an R3.
What is the difference between a R2 and a R3?
So an R1, you can have a single-family home, but an R3, you can have like apartments or duplexes. In R1s, you can actually have duplexes too, but, um, this has a duplex, and then the garage had an apartment above it before, and so they're wanting to revent, re-renovate it to make it an apartment again.
Thank you. I make a motion to adopt ordinance number ten, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Faidachne?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
All right. Moving on, next order of business. Ordinance number ten, twenty twenty-two. Two eighteen East Fifth Street, an ordinance to rezone.
We are, we did that.
We did that.
We just did that one.
Resolution number ten, yeah, it gets a little.
Resolution number ten. Is a resolution establishing the policy by which members of the Common Council may participate by electronic means of communications.
I make a motion to consider resolution number ten, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Faidachne?
Yes.
And whoa.
Yes.
Under discussion? Any questions?
Is somebody going to explain what that's?
I'll be glad to. So, previously, up until, um, beginning of March, we had been able to operate under the executive order of the governor to be able to have electronic meetings and stuff. Since he lifted his executive order, now, um, communities and municipalities have to have a policy for electronic communications, electronic, or remote or wireless attendance for those meetings in certain parameters. The legislative body has set out those parameters, and this resolution complies with that, keeps us in compliance with that. And it gives us the ability to have electronic meetings if necessary.
If someone's sick, they can.
Yes.
Right.
Now, as you'll see in there, at least fifty percent of the members must be physically present at the meetings, and no member can miss more than half the meetings, and again, that's all by statute.
Is this something, is this a policy that you're going to mimic, like, on Board of Works, or zoning and planning, or you're going to mimic the same thing with them?
Absolutely, and we got one for the Utilities Board on Wednesday and whatnot, so. Just blanket policy, every, every board or whatnot have this, just in case.
Jim, you had to deal with Maquita as well, didn't you?
Yeah, Maquita, uh, adopted a resolution.
Thank you.
In accordance with the statute.
Thank you. I make a motion that we adopt resolution number ten, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Faidachne?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
All right, next order of business. Request by Catherine Hackett and HWC Consulting to present the downtown revitalization plan to the council and community.
Sorry, I'm not Catherine, but anyway. That being said, I, I would like to introduce Catherine. She, as the mayor pointed out, is, um, with, uh, HWC Engineering. Back some time ago, uh, we solicited proposals for the development of a new downtown revitalization plan. Our current plan expired, I think the date of it was, well, didn't expire, the last date, I think, was nineteen ninety-nine. So clearly, the downtown was in need of a revitalization plan. There was a committee that solicited proposals, um, and we, as the committee, selected HWC to prepare that revitalization plan. So it's been a pleasure working, um, with this young lady. Uh, HWC's done a tremendous job in putting this revitalization plan together, and so with that, I'll turn it over to Catherine. Thank you.
Do you need me to switch slides for you?
No, I can do that.
Okay.
Is this as big as it gets for everyone, or do we? There you go.
There you go.
Oh, that's better, that's at least twice as big. Okay. Well, thank you, Jim, and thank you, everyone, for your time. So the purpose of this evening's presentation is to, uh, make you familiar with the work that we've been doing with the Steering Committee over the last few months, and then, um, ask that you consider adopting the plan, uh, at the next meeting in May. So, um, I will make the, I'm going to kind of give you a condensed version of the plan, and then I'll make this plan available digitally for all of you to access over the next few weeks. So first, I'm going to go over, um, the purpose of the plan and how it came about. So as Jim mentioned, the City of Peru and the Miami County Economic Development Authority are leading, decide to lead this effort, so we've been working very closely with them. Um, so the purpose of a downtown revitalization plan, why would you do one, Jim started to talk about that a little bit? Uh-oh. Oh, nice, okay, even bigger. So there's several reasons for doing the plan, um, one of which, building upon recent successes, you see images there of your Two Days Boutique and Seven Pillars. Um, and then also ongoing traditions, the picture on the right is my son at the circus last summer, so, um, out of town or enjoying those types of events as well. But building on those traditions, making them bigger and stronger, creating a vision and goals to be used as a guide, helping you focus your efforts, obviously, you come across decisions every day on your desk, but how to focus those downtown efforts and think what to start with first. Preparing for future funding opportunities, I know Peru was involved with Miami County Economic Development in the recent ready, uh, grant applications last year. So those types of opportunities from the state are coming all the time, and they're changing form, and you have very limited time to prepare for them. So it's something we've learned, um, working in cities, cities and towns across Indiana, is being ready with your plans on the shelf, ready to pull off and say, we're ready, we want to do this, whenever those opportunities come up. And then also eligibility for OCA grants, specifically the Office of Community and Rural Affairs has, um, downtown revitalization grants that you can use once you've adopted a downtown plan. So the study area, um, is, this map here shows the study area that was developed for the sake of the plan, so it's really, um, centered around the central corridor of Broadway Street, with the boundaries to the north being Eighth Street and the railroad, uh, South Canal Street and the river, West Miami Street, and East Wabash Street. Take all of that loosely, I've oriented the downtown directly north-south in this image, it's obviously tilted a little bit differently, but just for ease of looking at that. And then a little bit about the process. So, uh, when we do a downtown plan, the first thing we do is an extensive site visit, so I was here in August, in a very hot August day, and the first thing, kind of first impression we noticed was a business owner out painting a facade, which just speaks so much to your downtown. You know, you, there's dedication, sweat equity, people really care about what's happening, and you're not kind of stagnant or stuck, things are happening and changing and improving all the time, and that was really great to see. We did work with a Steering Committee that was made up of thirteen participants. There was city council representation, city representation, local stakeholders, local business owners, Miami County Economic Development. We had two in-person workshops and then did two virtual meetings as well, so four meetings over the last six months. Um, and we talked a lot, about a lot of different things, but some things we pulled from the Steering Committee were things they love about Peru, what's going well, recent wins, and then what they would like to see change. And then as a part of the process, we also do quite a bit of analysis, um, which you'll be able to see in much greater detail in the plan, but we look at past plans that you have already done, recommendations that were made before, physical conditions, everything from building density to open space, entrances, gateways, circulation, and then social-cultural conditions, so events and programming that you're doing, institutions, museums, things like that, that you have in your downtown, and then market conditions, um, trends, population, jobs, commuting patterns, housing, and then. jobs, commuting patterns, housing, and then dining and retail. So as a part of the plan, we do quite a bit of public input. So one of the options we offered was a public survey, which was posted on social media and available through a website. We had 306 survey responses, which was outstanding, and some of the key takeaways we took from those surveys were residents are really interested in shopping and eating locally and looking for more options. The programming that you're doing downtown is working. People are going to those events, they're enjoying those events, they're coming downtown, and they're supporting businesses because of it. Residents want to live downtown. We heard that time and time again. "I'd like to live downtown. There's no option for me." So that was really interesting. And then investing in downtown facades and public spaces, among other things, survey responders were supportive of investing in your downtown and understand the benefits that can come from that. We also had a public open house, and we had 40 people that signed the sign-in sheet. I think there were definitely more than that there. But that was a great opportunity to start to present the plan and hear from people, local business owners. Some of the key takeaways from that is we heard, "Hey, you know, I'd really like to have a seminar or conference downtown, but a hotel and take advantage of the restaurants and the walkability, but finding lodging is challenging. I'd like to see more hotels, a public restroom." People talked about, you know, bringing their families downtown or wanting to be at an event and staying longer and not wanting to have to kind of try to use a local business as a restroom facility. Municipal camping came up, which was kind of interesting, just thinking about activities that people are really taking advantage of, especially due to COVID. Recreational opportunities along your trails and along your riverfront is maybe an opportunity to look into. And then available building resources. There were people at the open house who were interested in purchasing buildings, renting buildings, and wanted to know, "Where can we find out about this? How can we kind of get connected?" As a part of the project, there was also a facade study. The intention of that was to kind of set you up for a large-scale facade grant for applying for those in the future. So the architect that we worked with was Access Architecture. I'm not an architect, but I'm going to go through their study relatively quickly, and then again, there's a lot more detail in the plan. But essentially, out of the downtown study area, there was a facade study designated, which was just kind of trying to find a focus area for the facades for the sake of the upcoming grant, not to say that anything outside of this area would be excluded, but just to kind of get the plan a focus, which is the magenta rectangle you see there, so really looking south of Main Street. So that was designated to begin. And then from there, the architects did a visual study of the buildings and then started to kind of prioritize which buildings had already had extensive work done and maybe didn't really need a lot done, which maybe needed some point tucking or some new windows, and then which really needed kind of an overhaul and needed to become high priority. They looked at existing conditions as well as historical significance of what the facades may have been years ago. And then during the open house, they were available for local business owners and property owners to come and talk to them about ideas they may have and what they'd like to do to their buildings. From there, they developed concepts and also did some cost modeling, all of which is in the plan. And then this is just one rendering example of how they started to show what those facades could be, how the windows could be replaced, the painting of the awnings and things like that. And that facade, so that facade study will then look at, in the recommendations, different grant opportunities that you could go after to start to improve some of those buildings. So now I'm going to go over some of the recommendations. So we ended up taking all of the analysis, all the public input, and organizing recommendations into three categories: economic vitality, promotion, and design. These are national kind of categories that the National Main Street Group uses. So first, for economic vitality, goals and strategies. So from this, the steering committee kind of rallied behind several different things under each category. So continue doing what's working. You have a revolving loan program and strategic property acquisition that you've been doing. Some of the different businesses downtown have benefited from that or have started from that, which is great. So continue doing that with Miami County Economic Development makes a lot of sense. Attracting destination dining and retail. So this was something that came up in a lot of the public input. We'd love to see more destination dining, different retail shop opportunities. Well, how do you do this? I think there's ways that the community can be supportive, developing a small business toolkit, incentivizing those types of opportunities over other types of opportunities coming near downtown, and then this idea of developing an incubator, food hall, or test kitchen, where some of those different types of business owners, entrepreneurs can kind of test something out before really jumping in. And then encouraging residential development, activating upper stories. Someone at the open house said, "I would love to see some downtown loft options." Establishing a blind abatement infill program as you kind of stretch further out of the downtown study area, and just developing downtown housing. So this image starts to give you an idea of kind of a case study of an incubator, food hall, or test kitchen, kind of what I mean by that. This is in Columbus, Ohio, established a few years ago, but it was a great reuse of an old historic building, turned it into a food hall. So it's really set up to kind of help those new entrepreneurs to get started who aren't ready to buy a whole building themselves but would be able to rent out a booth space. And they had, just to give you an idea, eight vendor spots, and they had 110 applications. So there really seems to be a desire for this type of kind of low-rent place that really helps people kind of work together and bring people in to see different food opportunities. Just a couple more images of that, how they turned the rooftop deck into a really neat space, and kind of gives you the idea of the scale of that. Promotion goals. So these are kind of those more, not necessarily infrastructure or tangible improvements, but your programming, tourism, things like that. So the discussion about the riverfront came up quite a bit. Not so many communities have this great opportunity with the river coming right through the downtown, so how do you promote riverfront events, engage a variety of groups to come downtown, expanding your tourism opportunities, offering more bundling options. So, you know, if you go to one restaurant, you can get 10% off at an adjacent store. Some of that is already happening, but just kind of doing more of that. And then thinking about even things like temporary art installations and having a revolving fund for something like that, even draw people regionally to come in in summertime to see what you have to offer. And then this idea of an event that celebrates the best of Peru and what you have going on. And then also, there was a lot of discussion in the steering committee about making the local identity visible, history and heritage into public spaces, theming, gateways, markers along the trail, just kind of thinking about, as you go through the downtown, do you even know that you are the circus capital of the world or some of the other events that happened, Cole Porter and things like that? How do you kind of make that more visual and more part of the fabric of the downtown? So a few images of that, just to kind of get your brain going, but this is in South Bend on the left, some of their river lights. In the middle is Providence Rhode Island Fire Water, and then on the right is Sugar Creek in Indiana, just a canoe race. But just kind of ideas of how do you incorporate that water into your event planning and programming? And then the idea of a temporary art installation, you know, the idea of making something temporary would really draw people in. You've got to come within these four weeks, and then it will be gone. Would draw people in from the region, and then kind of just that interactive idea of using spaces you already have, alleys, parking lots, for something that's really interesting. Public art is so great. You know, you can get really hung up on all trying to agree on a sculpture that's going to be there forever, but hiring, commissioning an artist to come in and do something temporarily could really kind of just get the summer pumped up for some nice tourism. And then the design goals, the more kind of tangible things, infrastructure improvement projects. We met with a number of people from the city and the utilities to kind of talk through issues that have been going on downtown that really need to be fixed and focused on. Obviously, we have a long list, but a few of those things, one was, again, investing in those buildings, improving facades, a long-term streetlight replacement solution, resolving drainage infrastructure at the railroad underpass at the north end of downtown, updating the circus facility and looking for future uses. That was kind of taken from a past plan recommendation. Initiating an alley activation and pilot program to really update some of those spaces that are just kind of this dead urban space, it's not being used. A street tree program, there's always challenges with street trees, but are there opportunities to incorporate those in places, and incorporating bumpouts over time. And then there was a lot of comments in the survey about, "We'd like a public space where we can gather, have events, come downtown, and be there." So that was a lot of words, so I'm going to show you some more pictures. So these are just some visualizations, again, thinking about these infrastructure projects. Obviously, you're not going to run out and do these tomorrow, but kind of trying to think about long-term, how things could start to change as you apply for grants and funding or as you strategically replace things over time. So this is a view of Broadway. One thing I just wanted to point out is the space that is between the angled parking and the crosswalk is really dead space that's required to be there so that your angled parking doesn't pull back out into an intersection. But could you look at that negative space and turn it into something really usable? So if you extended your sidewalk into more of a bump out there and allowed space for people as opposed to cars, you're still maintaining all of your parking space, but just using that dead space that's not really being used for anything. Public art could be incorporated, gateways, some of those identity features that we talked about earlier. Another before picture, obviously, your sidewalks are in good condition, but just kind of thinking about going to this space. "I kind of want to park, jump out, get what I need, get back in my car and leave." We want people to come downtown and say, "You know what? I'm going to walk a block and see what else is here. I want to stay." Some attractive things that make you want to stay longer than just getting the one thing that you need. So this after shot is showing, you know, incorporating places to sit. You already have a nice landscape palette of a lot of volunteer work that goes into those annuals. Can you add to that? As you improve your streetlights over time, adding hanging baskets, I know has been in discussion. You already have a really nice banner program. And then if street trees are a challenge, another opportunity might be just thinking about shade. I know I've walked these streets a lot in August. It was very hot. Maybe some shade structures are another option. So that's just an image of showing that, how you can start to bring in outdoor dining. And then entrances, there's obviously, in the plan, we show some kind of minor entrances and major entrances at the north ends and the east and west ends. But as you come into this community, you kind of aren't really sure. There's no specific signage to tell you where you are. So that could change. You could really start to use, you know, even, we're using circus theming in this case. It could be any number of your different kind of heritage and history appeals, but creating some statement pieces that say, "Hey, you've arrived. You're in downtown Peru." And then looking at public space, you know, you have some green space in the downtown. You have parking areas, but just kind of starting to think through what's the highest and best use of some of these places, and how could they be used for both parking and public space and maybe organized in different ways? So this is an after-plan view of Second Street and Broadway. There's a vacant lot on the right-hand side, so we're just kind of saying, "What if you took that and started to make it into a pocket park that you could, you know, use during the year? It would look great," and then, you know, plan events for it. Could you develop, I think there's been discussion over the last few years about a welcome center of some kind if the buildings were to be either retrofitted or replaced. And then that space to the, on the left side, you know, could really become a large public space. It could also become a parking area that can also serve as a public space, serve for farmers' markets and events and things like that. So just kind of trying to take, take your imagination a little bit farther as you start to think about these things combined together. That's just one more view, also thinking about as you connect your trails, bringing those down through the downtown, bike lanes, really trying to bring, you know, that regional traffic. One of, my boss actually lives in Avon, but he brings his family all the way up here to use the nickel plate. So how do you make sure and get him to come into your downtown and eat at your restaurant, shop at your store, making sure that trail connection gets through downtown easily? Another picture of kind of a splash pad concept. And then that green space, thinking through how that could be programmed. We kind of, we're throwing out this brainstorming idea of having these busker's locations, maybe something in a summertime event where you could have trapeze artists come out. You're just kind of thinking about that theming and playing off of all the great things you have going on already. And then that's one more before picture of that vacant lot. And the after there. And then we also started to think about identity a little bit, the sculpture in the top left-hand corner.
Catherine, excuse me, who owns that vacant lot? Who owns that?
City does.
Okay, thank you.
Thinking about the identity of, I was really impressed by the gymnasts on the ladders, the acrobats during the circus, so we just took that for something to play with. And that image starts to show you, that could be a sculpture that you could incorporate into the park and start to show some of your identity there. So that's all great, but how do we do this? So we take, at the back of this plan, all of these different recommendations and goals, and then we look for the initial tasks. We start to develop budgets and timelines, and then funding sources and who's responsible. So kind of the next steps after this plan is adopted would be those various parties, you know, Rediscover Downtown, the City of Peru, Miami County Economic Development, tourism, those different things would kind of have this task list of things that they could start to focus on, and then look for the funding sources that might help them with those tasks. So I've just got those spreadsheets, which I know are too small for you to see, but they're in the plan, and I can make them available. And just as a few examples of kind of those first steps. So the alley activation, for example, the first step with that would be identifying an alley and then coming up with a concept. IHCD has some great creating places crowdfunding grants that will match. You can get the public involved, they can donate, and then they will match up to a certain amount to maybe get something like that started. I know we're doing an alley activation project in Crawfordsville right now. They have a neat mural done, so it's really very attainable. Making local identity visible for that kind of wayfinding or signage idea, the Indiana Arts Commission is an option for that. And then this splash pad concept, Land and Water Conservation Fund, has a really great opportunity, if your parks plan is updated, to apply for funding for that. So just starting to give you some of those examples of the how we get these things done. So that's kind of the plan in a nutshell. Like I said, I will make that available online for all of you, so you can really dig into it. But obviously, at the end of a plan like this is when the real work begins, and you have to kind of start to take each one of those tasks and move through it. But I just wanted to thank you for your time. It's been our pleasure working with the steering committee, and we've had such great support from the community at all the public events, so it's really been wonderful. And I would like to leave my email address here as well, so if there's any specific comments you want to provide, you can do that, and we'll get those incorporated before next month. And then I'm happy to take questions.
Council, have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the audience have any questions?
Just out of curiosity, why'd you guys stop at the bridge and have the north side also? Why didn't you expand out a little further?
It's a good question, and actually, some of the people at the open house, their businesses were outside of that area, and were kind of asking the same thing. I think it's just a matter of, at the beginning of a plan, kind of, we have to stop somewhere, and it's not an entire comprehensive city plan. It's kind of trying to develop the specific downtown plan. So just kind of for sake of focus, we decided to keep it in that location. But I think over time, it certainly can be argued that your downtown is stretching outside of those limits.
Yeah, because as you come into Peru, that's what you see in the south, and your first depression would be, you know, when you're entering. To me, that would be what you see first.
A lot of the grants and those kind of things require us to have it designated downtown. And so that has been the designated downtown for, ever since we started the Main Street. Not to say that that can't expand, but that's just kind of focused now, and then we can always take and expand this out as we go.
I'd like to make a motion to expand.
I'll let you know where rediscover meetings are.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right ahead, next order of business, a request by Debbie Wallach on behalf of the United Way of Miami County.
I'm here just to give you an update on our DUCY. So we are moving it to August the 27th this year, basically because of the bridge, but it sounds like the bridge is going to be done quicker than I thought. But we're requesting, we're going to go to the Board of Works tomorrow night, but I just want to give you a heads-up of what's going to, so you're going to know before tomorrow. So we're going to move it, instead of doing it on Wayne Street Bridge, start, we're going to start on Broadway, and we're going to launch on Broadway, and we're going to do it on the west side of the bridge. And we're working with the chief... And we're working with the chief on going to the fire station and doing a shorter launch. The ducks took a lot longer to go down the river than we anticipated, but we are working with the Mississippi Corps of Engineers this year, and so the water level is going to be higher, so they'll float a little faster this year, we're hoping. And so we're also going to incorporate some boat races, so kayak races, so we're talking about doing some different things. So we're going to do kayak race, and we're going to do homemade boat races. So we had done that many years ago, so we're going to do that again. So, and it's going to be, our Ducky Festival is going to run a little longer. We're going to go from noon to eight, and we're going to incorporate a lot of other things that'll be family-oriented. So we're asking permission to use the River Walk and also use some of the land over by the pavilion, so we can have vendors, and we're going to have a band. And so we're going to have, this is going to be an annual event every year, and so we're really excited to be able to do that, and so we're just going to give you, ask your permission to do those things. And I just wanted to give you a heads up with the counsel to let you know what we're doing, and we're looking forward to making this an annual event every year. So we're just really excited to add more things and bring it to the community and have things for the whole family to have fun with.
That's a lot of fun last year. I mean, to see the firemen and Chief Rock and the other guys out there getting the duck. That was a lot of fun.
Yeah, and it's going to be a lot easier for Chief and his crew to be right there at the fire station, I think, this year, and so we're really excited. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, next order of business. Nita, motion to amend ordinance number 11, 2022.
Amend the agenda.
Amend the agenda.
Right. Motion to amend the agenda to add ordinance 11, 2022.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to add ordinance number 11, 2022.
Deckard, roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Loco.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Fidocny.
Yes.
I make a motion to consider ordinance 11, 2022.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Loco.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Fidocny.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
So last month, you guys had passed the contract extension with EMPA. All this is, is ratifying that contract via the ordinance that we're bound to have. And again, contract is already approved, so the ordinance just goes hand in hand with
Anything from the audience?
I move we adopt ordinance number 11, 2022.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Loco.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Fidocny.
Yes.
Wolf. No.
All right, anything moving on under communications? Counsel, have anything? Anything from the audience?
Oh, no, Matthew.
Hey, 4th of July, if you want to be a vendor, there's an application in the mayor's office, and also, we're looking for people who are going to do the music application in the mayor's office. Call us if you want it.
Thank you.
Anything else from the audience? If not, we're up for adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Yes.